Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the meeting of the Granville City Council. I'd like to call the meeting to order and ask Marcy to call the roll, please.
Councilmember Calderlos.
Here.
Merringa.
Here.
Nordhook.
Here.
Steenstra.
Here.
Truce.
Here.
Vanderwaal.
Here.
And Mayor Mas.
Here. Well, tonight, Councilmember Paul Truce will be giving the invocation. So for those of you who wish, I'd invite you to stand, and we're going to follow the invocation with the pledge of allegiance.
Please pray with me. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the many blessings you have bestowed upon us and our community. We ask for your presence here tonight and always help us to make good decisions for the people of Granville. And where there may be disagreement, help us to achieve consensus. We ask that you protect those who protect us, namely, our police and firefighters. We pray for unity in our country and for democracy to endure here. We pray all these things in your great name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Paul, thank you very much. Before we start tonight, I'd like to give a special welcome to Jane Sauerman, our new finance director. You came highly recommended, highly regarded, and we are just very fortunate that you've decided to invest your life in Granville. Thank you so much.
I would say the same. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. You have before you the agenda for tonight's meeting. Is there a motion to approve that agenda?
So moved.
Motion and support. Any discussion? Those in favor of approving the agenda, please say yes. Yes.
Yes.
Any opposition, please say no. Then we have the minutes from the August 22 meeting, a meeting that I missed. So JR, thank you for running that meeting. You've had a chance to take a look at those minutes. Is there a motion to approve or any additions, corrections, anything anybody wants to bring up?
So moved.
Motion? Support and support. Anything anybody wants to discuss in particular, any corrections, additions? If not, all those in favor of approving the minutes from August 22, please say yes. Yes. Any opposition, please say no. Okay, bills. It's a hefty amount, but we'll do the old fiscal year first, and that's a lesser amount, a little over $11,700. Ken, anything you want to point out to us about those bills?
In the old fiscal year, all that was, was the credit card payment that was made in August for those purchases that had been made prior to the end of the fiscal year on June 30. So just kind of normal credit card activity for the city, and that was the sole invoice.
Okay. Any questions for Ken about any of the bills for the old fiscal year? If not, is there a motion to approve those bills in the amount of $11,731.3?
So moved.
Motion and support. Any additional comments, questions? If not, Marcy, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Merringa.
Yes.
Nordhook.
Yes.
Steenstra.
Yes.
Truce.
Yes.
Vanderwaal.
Yes.
Calderlos.
Yes.
And Mayor Mas.
Yes. New fiscal year bills total substantially more, about $617,000. Ken, anything you'd like to point out?
Yeah, there's a few on there to hit. Mr. Mayor, the time of the year, summer is the time of the year. We do a lot of our concrete repair in the city. We kind of go neighborhood by neighborhood, and there's invoices there on page four and five from Intout Concrete. They fall into various funds, major street, local street, sidewalk, but all of it's related to sidewalk replacement, curb and gutter replacement, and ramps in various parts of the city. And in fact, this invoice represents about 3,000 feet of additional or new sidewalk that's replacing deficient sidewalk. So total of that invoice was $65,785. On page five, there's an invoice you see annually from CSX Transportation, $12,697. That is the charges that CSX levies to the city under law for maintenance of crossing signals, and that involves six different crossings in the city, and it represents maintenance from last October 1 through September of this year. On page seven, there's an invoice for waste recovery systems, $40,000. That was a summertime issue discovered with a collapsed sanitary sewer service in Wilson Avenue across from the middle school, and that was under the roadway and at least partially responsibility of the city. The bill was actually split with the service owner, but that was the city share. And the water bill for July is on there, which is the highest one of the year at a little over $126,000. So those are the highlights that I chose tonight, but as always, if there's questions, please let me know.
Great. Thank you, Ken. Questions for Ken about any of the bills? Comments? If not, is there a motion to approve the bills for the new fiscal year in the amount of $617,131.36?
So moved.
Motion? Support and support. Any other questions, comments? Now, Marcy, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Nordhook.
Yes.
Steenstra.
Yes.
Truce.
Yes.
Vanderwaal.
Yes.
Calderlos.
Yes.
Merringa.
Yes.
And Mayor Mas.
Yes. Tonight, first item, or before public comment, we have a presentation by the Kent District Library. Always look forward to this. So Josh, you brought your team with you, so I don't know who wants to come up first. Welcome. So glad you're here.
Thank you. Thanks for having us. Our trustee, Peter DeKeis, wasn't able to be here tonight, but I'm sure if he was here, the first thing he would say is, "Thank you. We appreciate the partnership with the city of Granville. We couldn't do what we do without you." So thank you for that. KDL exists to further off people, and we couldn't do it without you. And this has been a really exciting year. We had a little bit of a rough start in January, coming out of COVID, but now we're back in stride to pre-pandemic numbers in terms of attendance at our programs, in-person programs. Summer wonder just turned out really great. We had about 16,000 completers this year. A lot of them are teens, and the key focus on that is to help students to prevent the summer slide that happens when they're not in school. So it's been a great year for us in terms of that. Another thing that we're doing this year is we've always partnered with the World Affairs Council to do some type of a topic, a series each year. We've done topics on water quality, on civil discourse. This year, the series is on communities by design. We've mailed copies of the flyer and the letter to each of you. If you haven't received it, I have extra copies. I can leave them back here, but we hope you can join us. The library is often described as the third place. It's the place when people aren't at home and they're not at work. It's the third place, which is where they feel they belong. So we have a keen interest in how communities thrive and what the vision is for the communities, and that's the whole focus on this series with the World Affairs Council. So we have three guest speakers coming in to talk about what they see in different parts of the world, bringing it here, plus we're hoping to have a lot of great open discussion with the great work that's going on here in Granville and all the other communities around Kent County. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Josh, unless there are any questions.
Any questions? If not, all right.
Great. I'd like to introduce Josh.
Marcy, I have Eric.
Eric.
Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you. I'll keep it brief. I'm not going to steal any of Josh's thunder. My name's Eric DeHan. I haven't had a chance to formally introduce myself to the board in full yet, so I've been at Granville now for a couple of years as the co-manager along with Josh. We co-manage both the Granville and Byron branches. I've been at the Byron branch for about close to seven years now, but with the Kent District Library for 20 years. Both my kids go to Granville schools, so it's nice to be even more entrenched in this community. It's been a really, really great experience. And in that 20 years, I've really realized just how important it is to have strong relationships with the municipalities that we work so closely with, and particularly, you know, with this construction project that was recently completed. It's been really evident just how much support that we get, that we've gotten from the municipality, and it's very much appreciated. And when I first found out that I was going to be coming to this branch, I asked Josh candidly, "So can you tell me about the city? What's the board like?" And matter-of-factly, he said, "They're great." So, which was good. And again, you know, through the construction and through my interaction with DPW and the individuals that I've worked with here, it's been nothing but great. So we've got a lot of lofty goals at the library, and some of which can be hard to achieve without really strong relationships with the municipalities that we work with. And it's an honor to say that, you know, we're reaching those goals here in Granville. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Josh, welcome. Good to see you.
Well, I get to talk about the fun stuff. It's always odd to come do this as a real official thing, because I see you all pretty regularly, and we come bearing our annual report from stuff that happened a year ago now, especially because I think this is probably the last one on KDL's agenda for the year. So they started doing it when that was fresher, and we're just, you know, you guys are towards the end, right? Save the best for the last. But unless you guys have questions about that, numbers and all that stuff, I just want to share a little bit about what's going on at the branch. It was a very busy summer, as Randy mentioned, for KDL in general. The real excitement was that it was just the first time, really, especially with us. I mean, you combine COVID, global pandemic, and a building project, and things are just thrown to the wind for a long time. And this was the first time that it really felt normal. Summer is usually a very busy time, and so it was kind of bringing everything back, bringing everybody back in the building, just getting really busy for the first time. We had, whatever the number was, KDL-wide, 16,000 or so, 2,000 of those completers were Granville. As per usual, we had more completers than any other branch in KDL, because people love to come in and participate in our summer reading club. Programs were the theme of the summer. We just had people in there for anything and everything, whether they were coming to Thursday nights with the concerts and then the various evening family programs we did, or coming for storytime, or whatever else was going on. We had a lot of people come through the summer. Every summer, I've probably talked about it before, but every summer, my highlight is the Touch a Truck program, just because it brings the most, I mean, I think we had 400 or 500 people show up this year. And if you didn't come, it was the biggest one we've had yet. We were a little concerned, because we always used to do it in that little bump out by Chase Bank, which is no longer there, because it's now swings and grass and whatever else. And so we didn't really know where that would work, but it worked out well. We were fortunate enough to work with Mayor Mas and all the people in the other businesses there, and with the city to shut down part of the street there and do it in the street and in the parking lot, and we had JR and the folks at Dynamic as well. So we had, I think, 12 or 13 vehicles, so city vehicles, Kent County Sheriff vehicles. There was a school bus. There was a big construction, giant construction vehicle of some sort. I can't remember what, but it took up a third of the street. So next year, if you haven't been, you should show up when we do that, because it's always a good time. The other big thing this summer was training. We are, if you walk in the building, you'll see a lot of new faces. I would say the staff is, what, maybe a fifth new? Is that sound about right? In the last six to eight months. So we're going through the same things that everybody's going through. We've lost a lot of folks to upward mobility within the system, finding full-time spots or whatever, a lot of retirements. We've had a lot of staff at Granville that you've probably seen for the last 20 years and the last year or two have retired, and then a few people that have found jobs elsewhere. So we're very new, very fresh, very green in there, which is a lot of fun, because it's a lot of younger staff members who are really excited and kind of geeked about doing what they're doing. But it keeps Eric and I tired, because it's a lot of training. Beyond that, really, the summer, beyond the summer, the theme of really this last year has just been new, right? I mean, we have this beautiful new facility, and everybody is still walking in and excited to see it. Every day, I see at least one person when I'm out there, that it's their first time in, and they're kind of like thrown by it, or surprised, because they didn't, I don't know how you didn't know if you're in the Granville area, it was under construction, but, you know, they didn't know, and they're coming in and they're seeing it, and they're almost always very excited to walk through and see it. So much of the things that we built the building for are working really well. One of the main focuses was study space or private space, so we have all those new, I think, 10 or 11, depending on how you count them out, study rooms. They are full most of the time. I walked through today just to check it out, around 1:00. Nine of the 10, or 10 of the 11, all but one were full with, you know, individuals or people just working away. I went through again right before coming over here at 6:45, and I think six or seven of them were still full. We're talking after dinner hour. Kids have gone home. People that were working for the day and using it have gone home, and it's still, they're still busy with people talking to each other, using them. And then the other big, you know, obviously, part of it was the Granville Commons, which is phenomenal for us. We use it for all of our programming, and it's just a wonderful space. But beyond that, the community's using it. I looked through some of the bookings calendar a little bit earlier today, and I would say four to six times a week at least, it's being booked by some community entity, and that doesn't count the library stuff, and it doesn't count the city stuff, which is being used as well between, I know, police have used it a lot and have it coming up soon. Mike and Fire are using it, I think, next month maybe, and Ken's got it booked for something. So it's getting its use, which is really exciting. So kudos to all on the planning and that, because it's working out in the community. Anyone who rents it for the first time always is very excited at how easy it is to use and good of a location. And then finally, one of the things we're really excited about is the moving of a polling place that used to be in here over to there. I know it's handy to have the space for it, but we just like having people come in and see what we have to offer. We did it first for the first time in May or August?
Next.
August. So not even an overly busy election in the grand scheme of things, and we still had a ton of people coming in and then seeing that we had a library and making cards for the first time, and we're expecting that just to go gangbusters in November, when there'll probably be a lot more people walking through. So finally, I'll just end with a little story about why it's such a cool thing that we have a library here. I always ask staff for good, you know, patron impact stories to share with you, and today, no, I forgot to email staff about this, coming up to this, so I was kind of a little worried. But then one of my staff members came just this evening and mentioned that just last week, or maybe the week before, on Tuesday night when she was working, she had three different families here at the same time that were all immigrants or from some other country experiencing the library. Their kids had been there before. Their kids all spoke English. They were from three totally different places, all different languages, bringing their dad in or their family in for the first time to show them the library, getting library cards. And she just looked out and saw them all kind of just enjoying the kids' area and the space together, and was just reminded that, you know, what a library can do, how it can be that third space for people to come in and gather and explore. So that was just a cool thing to see that here in Granville, we've got all sorts of people coming to use the library. So with that, we'll leave it there. I'm happy to answer any questions about anything going on, library-related or otherwise.
Questions or comments for Josh? That's easy. Okay. All right. Great. Thank you for your presentation. We love our library.
We know.
Thank you. Time for public comment. Anybody here like to address the council? Just come on up to the podium, give us your name, address, and tell us what you're thinking about tonight. Anybody here? Carrie, welcome. Haven't seen you for a while. Carolyn, you're... Ken? Anybody? Anybody want to address the council? Last call. Okay. Next item on the agenda, under ordinance and resolution, is a Michigan Department of Transportation noise variance request. We've done these a few times. I don't know if, yeah, this is to the East City, Len. So Ma, tell us about this.
Sure. So, good evening, Mayor, for introducing this. You're right, we did one, I think, back in July for the work on M11, 28th Street, and this is very similar to this for that. This is for work being done along I-196 between 28th Street exit and Market Avenue. It starts tomorrow and goes through the end of October. As you know, we do have a noise ordinance that prohibits overnight work from hours at 10:00 p.m. to 7:00 a.m., so we do see these on occasion. It's pretty straightforward. As you know, if any residential property is within 600 feet of the work, we have to have this process. We need this variance. And there are some residential areas, including Grand Castle, and a couple of homes on White Street west of Wilson. We have a number of homes within the, we call it the triangle neighborhood between Chicago and 28th Street that fall into the 600-foot parameter. So pretty straightforward. If you have questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Okay. Any questions for Ma about this request for a modification of a noise ordinance, temporary? Marcy, what would this resolution number be?
3287.
3287. Is there a motion to approve Resolution 3287, a resolution approving the Michigan Department of Transportation's request for variance from the city of Granville noise ordinance?
So...
Motion?
Support.
And support. Any discussion, comments? Questions? If not, Marcy, would you call the roll first?
Councilmember Steenstra.
Yes.
Truce.
Yes.
Vanderwaal.
Yes.
Calderlos.
Yes.
Merringa.
Yes.
Nordhook.
Yes.
And Mayor Mas.
Yes.
I just want to thank Al Rhodes and the crew that he worked with, Maurice Riley, and your engineering staff, everybody involved. The M11 project's gone very well.
Thank you.
And we haven't had complaints, and we know you're doing, you're doing all you can to get the work done efficiently and be sensitive to the neighborhood as well.
Yes, thank you. I'll come up for a quick...
Sure.
Again, thank you.
Yeah, tonight should be our last night of paving for that 28th Street project. We will have some subcontractor work over the coming weeks to wrap that project up, but as far as uneven lanes and things of that nature, after tonight's work, it'll be a completely repaved road, and then we'll just have some structure adjustment work and some electrical work to finish up. So, yeah, it's gone really well, and then appreciate the motion and approving for this upcoming project as well. So with that, thank you.
Great. Well, thank you. You know, there's nothing, there's very few things more beautiful to local elected officials than threshing.
We love paving it for everyone, so thank you.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda, under the consent agenda, which would be in the best interest of the city, because there are some purchases there. Lot of reports. Police report from August. Thanks, chief. It's good. It's interesting. Photos, everything. Thank you. We also have the troopers' report from August. The Environmental Sustainability Committee, a couple meetings, one in June, one in August, the minutes from those, and also the minutes from the Park and Recreation Board. I think we've got a couple of members here from June. And then we have some miscellaneous purchase orders and requests. We have the city complex snow mound header. That's over by the police department, I believe, in the court. We also, DPW lighting upgrade in the Cold Storage Building, and then the motor pool vehicle disposals, a number of trucks, a couple, one pumper fire truck. Charlie, is there anything about any of those disposals that you want to point out? I know there's memos in here, but anything in particular?
No. The fire pumper truck, we put a minimum bid on it. If it doesn't go that way, what I'd like to do is make it into a crash protection unit to have in the budget rather than an old bomb truck, because it's got the lights and sirens and the utility lights on in compartments. So if it doesn't reach its max for the minimum bid, that's, you can't repeat that job.
Okay. So, as I said, the consent agenda approval would be in the best interest of the city. Is there a motion to approve consent agenda?
So moved.
Support. Support. Anything anybody wants to talk about in particular, or ask questions about, comments? Josh?
I'd just say again, thanks to the chief for the report. I know you included the information about the cadet program from the summer and shared that with us a couple of weeks ago at Park and Rec as well, but just say thanks to DeShanta and Emma for some great work this summer. Successful program, first year out. Thanks to the Weller Foundation for underwriting it, and look forward to next year. Thank you for the report. Looks like they had a really productive summer and really good start to the programs.
Definitely look up to the next 15 seconds.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, we have a motion in support. Marcy, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Truce.
Yes.
Vanderwaal.
Yes.
Calderlos.
Yes.
Merringa.
Yes.
Nordhook.
Yes.
Steenstra.
Yes.
And Mayor Mas.
Yes. Ken, city manager's report.
Starting off that tonight with a couple of purchases that are highlighted for individual approval because of the rate of circumstances. The first of which is the motor pool's purchase of two new above-ground fuel tanks. Charlie gave you a memo on that and some purchase order with some description. One tank is a 300-gallon tank, and one's a 500-gallon, and they're used for either diesel or regular gasoline. Generally, like lawn mowers and things like that would use that to refuel. But this is on council's agenda technically under the heading of emergency purchase under our ordinance, because we've actually already made the purchase. This was the, one of the tanks was found to be leaking and deteriorated and needed to be taken out of service immediately. There's a lead time associated with this, and we didn't want to wait the two weeks it was going to take to get approval, to get that process going, because we're sending that equipment to the cemetery temporarily to be refueled. So your authorization of this purchase will actually be retroactive, authorization for the order you've already placed, and hopefully, we're a couple of weeks now into that lead time. Charlie, anything in particular on that one?
No, you explained it all. The leaping and the new tanks will be moved toward a location, because we don't have to have a payment. They say that we have a 1,000 gallon, now it's a double wall, and you can see yourself. So that would be a good thing. And you've seen some of the pictures, because they're even cracking concrete inside.
It's non-budgeted, but there are funds available in the motor pool, and it's, as you can see from the photos, it's a necessary upgrade. So it was probably coming at some point, no matter what, just it's been exacerbated or accelerated because of the discovery of the leaping situation.
Questions for Ken? Okay. If not, is there a motion to approve the purchase in the best interest of the city of these two tanks from J&amp;H Oil Company in the amount of $5,340?
So moved.
Support. Motion, support. Questions, comments? Now, Marcy, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Vanderwaal.
Yes.
Calderlos.
Yes.
Merringa.
Yes.
Nordhook.
Yes.
Steenstra.
Yes.
Truce.
Yes.
And Mayor Mas.
Yes. Ken, aerial fire truck apparatus.
I'm going to have Mike and Jane step up and answer specifics on this one, but as a general introduction, council was aware that this was the second of two fire apparatus pieces that we were looking at moving into this year, the first of which went into service that we were looking at moving into this year. The first of which went into service at the end of August, so that was great news. The second of which is the aerial truck replacement. And this is a, quite an old vehicle, leases in terms of its age. Mileage is a little different in the fire department, but I'm gonna let Mike explain the details as to why we're requesting the purchase order be authorized tonight and then we can go from there.
Thanks, Ken. As Ken noted, this is the second of two purchases we've talked about since budget time back in February. The reason we didn't buy the two as a pair was we had this federal grant out there for the aerial truck that we were still hopeful of receiving. Back around the 4th of July, we started to get some very anecdotal information about an $800,000 gift or grant from the state that may or may not be out there. And we didn't really have any concrete information about that until a week ago. And now we know that's a real thing. We know the number is accurate. We have correspondence with the state indicating, yes, you've been awarded this $800,000. Please go ahead and order your truck. So that disqualifies us from the federal grant because that was based on, on need. So now we're comfortable going forward with the purchase of the, the aerial truck. So the price you've got in front of you tonight, and I know I'm getting expensive in my old age here, but that includes, it's all-inclusive. It's, if you remember back with the engine, we had to spend another 20 or $30,000 that I had in different line items in my budget to get it lettered and upfitted and things like that. That's all included in, in this price that's provided tonight. The price you've got in front of you tonight is, also includes a $70,000 discount that the manufacturer is offering if we get a purchase order into them by Thursday. So that's advantageous. And you won't see Jane and I sprint down the hall this time. Unlike last time when we were up against, it was a big competition for that engine we bought. Our vendor, knowing we were serious about this purchase, actually made arrangements with the manufacturer to make this one available to us before it's been published on the list that goes out basically nationwide. So by acting now, we save $70,000. We avoid a 7% price increase. It's coming November 1st and we know that's our truck. So delivery would be in June of 2023. And I guess I'll stop there and see if there's any questions.
We don't actually have to pay until June 2023.
That is correct. You have an option to pay if you so choose before then, any amount of money and there's a little bit of interest that comes back if we do that. But I'll work those details out with Jane. The first official thing, our first official interaction is me putting a $1.3 million purchase order in front of her. Trust me, so. We'll, we'll get there though.
Any other questions for Mike about the equipment itself?
This is a picture of what it would look like.
Very similar. Of course, it'll say Granville. It'll be lettered, but yeah, that's a recent delivery to another city in Michigan, a nearly identical truck.
Personally, what do you think about the black?
You know, I wasn't sure. We kind of got stuck with it with the engine because everything else we had was white over red. And I wasn't sure until I saw it and I thought that turned out really sharp and the guys did. And most of the comments we got from council that night when we got it parked out here were favorable. So that's probably going to be our new color scheme.
I like it.
With council's authorization tonight, we'll be able to get this in by Thursday, take advantage of the discount. And then as the chief said, with no money due at this point, the next time you'll probably hear back from us will be when we have to make arrangements for payment. And whether we decide to go the installment purchase route or use any ARPA funding or whatever, but we don't have to deal with that tonight.
And I'm sure Jane, you've started thinking about that and probably have.
I've had some conversation with Tammy about it ahead of time. Mike and I've had some discussion about it. Y'all know that rates are on the rise, so it's one of those things that you want to lock in sooner than later if you are going to finance, so.
So with the, with the add-ons and stuff, what, and take off the 800K, where are we at? Somewhere between 5 and 600?
536.
Okay.
Sounds like somebody else did the math too. 536, 035.
And that, that would be after you get all the added things.
That's out the door. That's unlike the engine. That is all-inclusive and we're done at that point.
All right.
So that, that's something we could possibly split over a couple of budget years to spread out payments like we did for the other.
Well, if you, if you engage in installment purchase agreement, I think the last, you said the engine.
Was 15.
Is 15 years. So that is something that you could meter out over the next 15 years. Those engines have a very long lifespan. They don't appreciate.
Both of these apparatus should have a minimum of 25-year lifespan.
And when we purchased the, the pumper earlier this year and did it by installment purchase, the first installment wasn't even due in this budget year, so.
Correct. And that's why there's not a corresponding line item. That's why it shows that your purchase order is unbudgeted because there is no payment due on either apparatus at this point until.
And that's fairly typical for an installment purchase agreement. The payment is due about a year later from the purchase.
Is this something we'll talk about next spring at budget time or we should talk about prior to as far as locking in interest rates or?
We'll, we'll probably have an initial conversation in October because the first option you, you might wish to look at is whether you wanted to dedicate any of the known ARPA funding to this or not. And if you did, we'd want to make sure that's part of your October conversation on prioritizing the plans. And if you don't, that just means we can defer that confidently until it's time to work on the installment purchase.
It's nice to have options.
Yes, it is.
Yes. Other questions or comments? If not, is there a motion to approve the purchase of new fire equipment from Hall Fire Incorporated in the amount of $1,336,035 in the best interest of the city?
So move.
Support.
And support. Other comments, questions? Now, Marcy, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Galdarlos.
Yes.
Merengah.
Yes.
North Hook.
Yes.
Steenstra.
Yes.
Truist.
Yes.
Vanderwall.
Yes.
And Mayor Mas.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Counsel, thank you and the fire department. On behalf of the entire fire department, we appreciate the support and, and the backing you've given us on these two long overdue and, and really needed pieces of equipment. So thanks very much.
Thank you. Ken, water meter replacements.
Have Charlie step up briefly here. This is a continuation of our ongoing process of upgrading all the water, residential water meters in the city. Get the, the highlights of it for council.
It's, we, three years ago, I think we signed one of these and everything's pretty much identical, what we do, change the meters. They do a inspection for back flows and stuff, cross connection also, and it's all reported. The main, the main difference in the, in this one is the cost went up from, excuse me, $95 to $105 per meter, which is not that much bad. So is there any other questions in it? I can answer them or?
I just have one comment, and I don't know how many of the council members, you've personally had them come and switch out their meter, but my experience was really good, super professional, very fast and out. It was great.
There's been some hiccups along the line, but those have been addressed in the past year.
My experience was perfect. Chair.
How about Randy?
Mike, I, I just have a concern or question about the letter or the logo head under it's like Article 3, 3.5, where the city is supposed to give private or a copy of our logo. And I just want to, just, there's been some confusion for some people about they expect a city employee to come because it's, they get a letter with the city logo on it. If, I don't know, is there any way we could get a copy of that letter or just, I mean, how do we clarify more that this is a subcontractor for the city? Because the logo on the letterhead is confusing. It's particularly confusing for seniors or single parents with kids or people who are, you know, busy or whatever.
We could possibly take the.
Not a city shirt, not a city ID.
We could possibly take the, the city logo off, put a HydroCorp on it and explain that it, it's on behalf of the city of Granville. HydroCorp will be doing the meter exchange program, something like that. I can talk with HydroCorp to correct it and make it more legible.
You can see I was, can be confusing to some people.
Sure, sure. I can, I'll definitely talk to them about it.
And then, and I talked to you a little bit about this before about a backflow preventer, particularly in spigots. I mean, I understand you want them on like a hot water boiler system and things like that. Are people given 30 days? Are they, are they, do you know how they're informed? Is it, does the city go, or excuse me, does HydroCorp go back for the same fee and re-inspect or because?
The, the backflow or the, they call them a hose bib.
Right.
Okay. HydroCorp does their job and they, they, they tell them that they need to have to get this done. They have given them a timeframe. That is one of the big things we have to correct from last year. There was a lot of confusion. And people were, you know, they said that you had to go pay a plumber to change it. Well, this year, we're going to give them to residents that need them. And HydroCorp can put them on when they see them. If they, if they don't have them on their outside spigots, HydroCorp will have them from us to put on and eliminate the total confusion of, you know, you have to get a plumber and you've got so many days to get it taken care of. It'll be taken care of at that time. We're working through some issues.
Any other questions, comments, chair?
I was just curious how far along in the city process we are getting everybody's water meters replaced.
Um.
Roughly.
Getting close to half.
Nice. I think I ask this every year, so.
I think it was five or 50, 500 out there. We're a little over 2,000.
I had a great experience with, with our replacements, so no problem.
Randy? Just to follow up if I may. So what if the contractor, HydroCorp, am I saying that's who it is?
HydroCorp?
HydroCorp, pardon me, doesn't want to agree to not using our, I mean, doesn't want to waive their right to using our logo, then what? I mean, if you want us to approve this tonight, we don't know that for a fact.
Just, I, I suppose you could approve it with what you're saying is, you know, not using it and, sure.
I think, I think the, the main purpose of that is because we're doing a wholesale amount of replacement here. And without some sort of indication that it's a city activity, it might be mistaken for an advertisement or junk mail.
I, I get that as well too. I just think somehow it needs to be spelled out a little bit more that this is a contractor, private contractor, working on behalf of the city. So people don't expect a Granville employee to show up in a Granville truck.
When Charlie and I spoke about this with last year's run of replacements, we talked about reviewing the communications to make sure that there wasn't confusion and there's a way to avoid that. I, I guess I would encourage you to approve the agreement the way that it is and then to let staff work with the, the vendor to make sure that we can take out as much of that confusion as possible. The calls that come in, we haven't got swamped with them, but there were a number of them and we all know where they go. They go to the Department of Public Works. So Charlie and his staff would rather not take those phone calls as well.
And last year, they had a whole different team in here also, and a different leader. So I addressed that immediately with them in a phone call the other day.
Dude, just curious, do they use their own employees or do they just?
No, they use only employees.
Why don't we just send the letter out on their behalf or why, why don't we have them send the letter that they're sending to prove it or approve it before it goes out? So.
They do.
Does it have your name on it too or the, the Public Works if they have questions to call or?
Um, I think the Public Works number is in there if I remember in the letter.
I mean, that would just be a suggestion is either we send it out or we, you know, basically proof the communication that goes out and sort of co-brand it or whatever to, to send it out so that, you know. I had a couple of questions like that too where they wondered, is this legit? You know, because I got this letter and it looks like it came from the city, but I'm really not sure. And, you know, I knew what it was about because I knew we were doing the, the meter replacement, but people don't necessarily know. I mean, maybe we could put a notice in our newsletter that goes out with the water bills or whatever too again. Just a suggestion maybe to make it a little clearer for people.
This is the one area that we have intended to work on this year after last year's experience and knowing that there was at least some amount of confusion out there. I think we do have the ability to put utility bill stuffer out there. So we'll, by whatever means we can, we'll try to make it clear to people so that they don't feel, any part of it may have been coming off COVID. You know, who's coming into my house, that kind of thing.
People are just a little cautious about having somebody come in their house and they don't know who they are and.
But this, this will be a focus for us this year to try to make sure that we get ahead of that. It'd be nice if we didn't have anyone who had any confusion if the letter was written appropriately and clearly enough, so.
Currently intent is, we're looking at the month of February to be doing this. So when you get into the court of readings, yes. We have time to take care of things.
Is there a motion to approve entering into this contract with HydroCorp?
So move.
Support.
And support. Other comments, questions, suggestions? Marcy, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Merengah.
Yes.
North Hook.
Yes.
Steenstra.
Yes.
Truist.
Yes.
Vanderwall.
Yes.
Galdarlos.
Yes.
And Mayor Mas.
Yes.
Ken, next item, Millrais Park design construction.
Matt's gonna cover that.
So those of you who have been around for a while, the mayor, Josh and Randy may remember Bob Petco from Progressive A. He did all of our park design work. Well, he's long retired, so we don't use him anymore, but we have used OCBA in the last couple of projects too now and this will be our third. So back in August, you approved the agreement with the DNR for our grant for Millrais Park. The agreement we have with you is with OCBA for the project design, the bid specs and also the project management in the amount of $12,900. So again, we're continuing to establish the relationship with OCBA. They have a team. It's a small group, but they've been very effective in Granville, particularly with the work they did on our Farmers Market project. They managed that entire project. We are very impressed with them. So we'd recommend that you approve the agreement tonight. Be happy to answer any questions.
Just, just one comment, Matt. So we've been very happy with OCBA.
Yes.
And I don't know, it just struck me as a very reasonable amount, actually.
It's only, to be clear, you see these A and E fees could go as high as 10 to 15%. This is only five and a half. There will be additional engineering costs, working with more inclusion, but it's still very low.
That was just my observation. Questions, comments or?
I happened to be at that meeting when they made the presentation to the DDA on the Farmers Market and I thought they were a highly professional group and did a very nice job. I mean, look at the project. So I'm behind it.
Chair.
Yeah, I like it too. I would just would encourage the city to keep Parks and Rec involved in this process. I know that they've been asked to have representative representatives at the, at this, these meetings. So I guess I would just encourage that.
Absolutely.
Relationship to be open, so.
I think it's going to be a great project and.
Looking forward to it.
Grant money.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, is there a motion to approve entering into this contract with OCBA in the amount of $12,900?
So move.
Motion. And support. Other comments, questions? Now, Marcy, please call the roll.
Councilmember North Hook.
Yes.
Steenstra.
Yes.
Truist.
Yes.
Vanderwall.
Yes.
Galdarlos.
Yes.
Merengah.
Yes.
And Mayor Mas.
Yes.
Ken, anything else for us tonight?
Just to highlight one of the miscellaneous pieces of material in your packet. Doesn't seem like it's possible. It could be odd at time again, but it is. And we're in the midst of a multi-year engagement with Granville Hapner to do that work. And so in your packet is the standard letter that goes to the governing body indicating the responsibilities that both they as our auditorium and the city and its staff has. So that'll be getting underway shortly. We'll be looking at probably onsite work in October. I think there's a schedule already for that.
Seventeenth.
Seventeenth, week of the 17th. Jane is already familiar with this firm, so that's helpful as well. And you can expect the report to be generated in time for a November presentation at one of those two council meetings, probably the second meeting in November. So can't believe it's that time of year or whatever, but yeah. And I have nothing other than that, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, great. Council member comments? Chair, let's start with you.
Just like to wish Randy happy birthday. Randy to your left, happy birthday.
Happy birthday today. Yes, it is.
Where else would you rather be on your property? I think it has. I sort of remember saying that. Probably six years ago or whatever.
Louis, that's it. Thank you.
Well, happy birthday to Randy. And Ken, I had a question about the, this, in the packet from FEMA. I think it's from FEMA. Anyway, this information that the national flood insurance rate maps are included. Has the city seen these maps? Are, is staff gonna share that with us or a summary and what the changes are and what that's gonna mean?
Go ahead, Matt.
We have the draft map. It was set out maybe a year ago. We'll be getting to officially stamped brand new maps probably by December.
Okay.
And we have to do an ordinance amendment to our stormwater section. The zoning ordinance to adopt these maps, but it's been in process for a long time. Matt's actually been using the draft maps for quite a while for unofficial purposes, just because they're easier to read and more accurate than what the old 1982 maps are.
Is this a major revision as far as lots of changes goes and for the boundaries?
It's, it is a county-wide revision, so it's extensive. You know, the general turn, parts of the floodplain get bigger, parts get smaller. But in general, the Granville portions have overall got smaller.
Really?
Yeah. I think that comes with more accurate topographical information. So, but, but I don't want to make a blanket statement.
That's fine.
Because there's lots of properties that are either going to be more involved, just depending on what that data came out to be.
Thanks.
Are there those maps online where people can go and look at them or is there a website?
We'll have them here in the office if someone wants to look at them. I get calls all the time, but like, what is happening?
There isn't a map you can look at, GIS online or anything that?
Well, Regis will have them.
Eventually, once they're approved.
We'll post them as a layer on Regis. I'm sure the company have it as a layer on their GIS system as well.
So Matt, the ones currently in place, they're 1982, they're 40-year-old maps, right?
Which is an awful map. Most of Granville, not most, but large portions of Granville haven't been developed yet. And it's, a lot of streets are still missing. And again, this is what, where each company is, you can determine whether or not it's. Again, for 1982, it's probably a fine map.
This is kind of an aside, it's an anecdotal thing. When I did an addition on my house, it's, the map is, yeah, not exactly precise. And, and like, if my house is underwater, we're all underwater, you know? And so I hired somebody to figure out exactly the elevation. It's like, yeah, we're fine. But yeah.
It's like, yeah, we are fine. But yeah, this will be nice. Because, yeah.
You're up.
Okay, Ken.
Oh, yeah, just thanks, Josh and Eric, for your report tonight and for the good work. It's good to hear. We're number one again for the summer reading program, and glad to hear that kids are reading in, in Granville. Do you have adults in that reading program, too?
Yeah, it's kids, teens, and adults, so.
Okay.
I think we had our biggest game, actually, with adults this year, but I haven't looked all that art, but.
Very cool. Great to hear. Thank you so much. Justin.
All right, well, happy birthday, Randy. And I wanted to welcome Jane. I enjoyed being part of the interview process and thought it turned out well, so welcome to Granville. I did want to say about the aerial fire truck and the securing and financing, my personal preference is that we would not use the ARPA funds and we would go forward with an installment plan. I think with the significant reduction in the principal that the state has given us through this grant, that's my personal preferred option as we move forward. So just putting that out there for now. And I see that the MML posting closes today. So I look forward to hearing on a city manager position and seeing what great candidates are out there, assuming that Ken is not changing his mind. I'll, I'll get back with you guys when I hear from the consultant. But I think he, he told everybody the next step would be for him to sit down with everybody and review where we are and give you some opportunity to get some input before you sit on interviews. So I don't know whether they'll be in two weeks or whether that'll be a little bit more than that, but I'll, as soon as I know, I'll pass it on. Thank you.
Josh.
Happy birthday, Randy. Welcome to Jane. I'm saying the same things. Get towards the end of the table here. Thanks to Josh and Eric as well. You know, it's great to hear about what's going on at the library and, you know, you guys are welcome here anytime, obviously, but it's nice to hear a report about, you know, summer reading and the use of the new, new space. And I think this might be the first time you guys have been here formally to kind of tell us about, you know, the utilization of the space now that we've had the summer and programming and stuff like that. So that's just great. I mean, it's fulfilling the intent that it was, you know, it was built upon, basically. So we're happy about that.
Welcome, Jane. It's a wonderful community. I'm sure you'll enjoy it here. And other than that, I guess, happy birthday, Randy.
Well, I've already wished Randy a happy birthday, but I'll do it again. So a couple, couple fun events. Saturday, I had the chance to go into the Number 10 Schoolhouse at Heritage, and it's really looking sharp. I mean, I hadn't been in there inside for a couple of years, and it looked great, and.
There's a celebrity docent, too, right?
There was. There was. And actually, I ended up doing a short little concert on the upright piano there, so we had a lot of fun. So it was a good way to start Saturday. So thank you. And the Historical Commission, too. I mean, it's really looking really nice in there. So that was one thing. I had an opportunity to do a groundbreaking for the apartments behind Target. 408 apartments are going to go in there, and it seems like a very professional group. I think we'll be really happy with that, and very well-organized event as well. Final thing on Saturday. So I did the Number 10 Schoolhouse in the morning, and then the evening was over in Ken's neighborhood where they had a block party, and they used, submitted and were approved for one of the $1,500 mini-grants. What a great time. I mean, they had slip and slide and bounce house and just a lot of fun things. Then everybody was talking to each other, and I thought that's exactly, this is exactly what it's meant to do. And firefighters were there. I mean, like, who doesn't love shiny equipment, flashing lights, and lots of water? So it was, thanks to your, your department for making a lot of fun for the kids. So that was a great, great event. So I'm looking forward to seeing, you know, what other mini-grants.
How many would you say were involved? How many participated?
I went at the very beginning. It was from 3 o'clock. So I would say like 10 after 3:00, because I wanted to make sure the fire equipment was there, and it was. And I'm gonna guess, I don't know, I saw Matt's family there. I'm gonna guess 100 people at quarter after 3:00. Now supper wasn't going to be until 5:00, so I'm assuming there were more people then. But it was just a lot of people walking around, talking to each other.
Right.
Street was blocked off. So anyway, fun, funny back. I'm looking forward to seeing what other people have in mind for the mini-grants. So anyway, that's all I've got. Fun things. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So move.
All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
And the oppositions, please say no. Great. Thank you, everybody, for being here.